Please fill it out with your name so we have an accurate accounting of who's attending our meeting. Two of our select board members are attending by Zoom, Lee Dakin and Heather Chase. And myself and Lee Gustafson are going to be here in person. And I think Ben's out with his kids on a basketball game or something. I don't blame him for family time sometimes. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our February 1st Select Board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the February 1st 2023 minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Lee is the motion, and Lee is the second. Any changes, corrections, errors, omissions, anything on the minutes from our February 1st meeting?
I have none.
I have none.
Heather, you're okay with the minutes? I saw your mouth move, but I didn't hear anything. Are you muted?
Yep.
I wasn't there, so...
Thank you, Heather.
Okay.
Those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Aye. So there's three of us. Just squeaked by. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there anybody here for citizens' comments? Our next item is old business. Julie, can you take us to our old business list?
I can. Just three quick things. Solar Field, the appraisal has been sent to Greenbacker. I have not heard anything back. I'm going to give them till the beginning of next week before I bug them again for an The Brickside Trail signs are up, so we will... They'll be up and ready for Winter Carnival, which is another thing. Winter Carnival is this weekend. It'll be interesting to see what we have for Winter Carnival, given the weather that we're going to have prior to the weekend. But there will be different events around town Friday and Saturday. The Wayfinding Plan signage, we are going to be going out to bid... Thank you, Sean. We'll be going out to bid hopefully this spring. We're, at the moment, are going to be starting to work on the kiosks, the maps for the kiosks. And I have a few people in town that are going to kind of help me look at that and think about what we want those to look like. They won't identify individual businesses because we want a map that will stay true for years to come, but being creative with some different things. So you'll start seeing more about that coming up over the next few months and looking to do installation of signs this summer. So that's coming. And policies, I, you know, this has been on our list for like forever. So Preston and I are going to be working on going through our policies this summer. Preston does policy and ordinance writing as well. So I'm hoping at the next meeting, there will kind of be a list for you to show these are the policies which we have, but putting them in order of updating some just discussion about whether we even still need them. So that's coming. But that's it really for old business, not much.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah.
Any Select Board members have anything on old business?
I have nothing.
Lee, Heather, anything?
Not this time. Not this time.
All right. Thank you.
I should have asked this in the beginning about a change on the agenda a little bit. I just wanted to bring up the Chester Community Gardens after the Canal Street discussion because they're kind of related in a way. And if it's okay with the board, I'd like to change that.
Fine with me.
Sounds good to me.
All right. So we'll have the Chester Community Gardens update after the Canal Street discussion. We had a site visit today at 5:00 on Canal Street. Part of the work that the town has been doing regarding the Chester Community Gardens was to verify the boundary lines on the Canal Street property to make sure we knew where exactly everything was and what was, where the boundary lines were with our neighbors and stuff. And what happened is on the survey that was done for the town, there was a discrepancy between the town survey and a survey that was done by a neighbor on the south side, I believe it is. And it was the Aldrizes property that is next to the Canal Street property. And there was a discrepancy on a survey that was done in the '60s and then the town one that relied on one that was from the '50s and I guess '70s or '80s and stuff. The difference, myself and Lee Gustafson went to the property and Julie also, just to get our eyes on it, to see what it entailed and what it was like and what was happening there. It's a sliver of a property that goes, it's a small triangle on the border. And if anybody is interested, there are some maps here that delineate for the survey that the town did and the survey that the Aldrizes had done in the '60s when they bought the property. It shows the differences between them. I think it's about 150 long, 150 feet long, and it's about 30 or 40 feet wide down to a point, approximately 5, 6,000 square feet of property that we're talking about.
It's actually 3,800 square feet.
3,800, yep. So it's even less than I thought. The, there was two different pins. One pin that the Aldrizes claim was a corner of their property and one that was set by our, by Gary Rappanati on the survey that he did for the town. Physical evidence there seems like it favors what the Aldrizes are saying as far as the property line because of the way the, the growth has taken over and the tree line and the brush line between the two properties and stuff. So it's up to the Select Board on how they want to pursue this. I imagine you could have a giant court battle and get surveyors and go through that routine for the sliver of property and stuff, but it's a small piece of property. It's not serving the town anything. It's not in a place that really is going to make or change anything as it comes along in the future. So saying that, I would like to hear the opinion of the board members on how we should proceed with this.
So from my perspective, as you said, I don't think this is a critical piece of property that the town needs to own. And I don't see any reason why we would spend any more money or time on this particular issue. So from my standpoint, I'm happy to help it, to help or see this work out so that it works for both parties.
Lee, Heather, any opinions on this? Any thoughts?
I think... Go ahead, Heather.
No, you go.
Well, I can agree with the information we see from Gary Rappanati. And I do believe also from what I could read from Mr. Aldrich that there doesn't seem to be a lot of, something that's bothering him. You know, he found some different items and that's good, but it doesn't seem like there's a big, oh, some, you know, discrepancy. Or there's a discrepancy, but not something that's going to bother him, it seems to me from what I could read.
Heather?
I'm just curious about, okay, so we do a new title. I don't know what the process is. Okay, you get this 3,800 square feet that's in dispute. What about the tax implications? Is there, like going forward, the, the property would be assessed at a different way, right? And do, and is that retroactive or is that just, how would that be handled?
So the town, if the town is not, does not have any interest in the 3,800 square feet, we would do a boundary line adjustment between the town and the Aldrizes. That then gets approved by the Development Review Board. That then triggers the listers. The listers are going to do a new valuation with the additional acreage that they're, that the Aldrizes are given. And then that would affect their April 1st grand list. Grand list is not retroactive.
Okay.
So it's only going forward.
Well, and that's just good to be transparent with that. So if they know that, then hey, I have, I just wanted to know that.
Yeah.
And it's interesting, the tax maps themselves show it as the survey that we did or the survey that when they brought the property?
I think the tax maps show it the, the way it is with the, in the Aldrizes' perspective.
So it probably wouldn't affect their taxes at all?
It may not. It may not, but we leave that to the assessors.
Which is another point to bring up that, you know, maybe ours or...
Just curiosity and wanting to make sure. Since I didn't go on the visit, I would yield to Arnie and Lee and go along with them.
Yeah. And me and Lee both agree. It's, the boundary line adjustment would be the best way to go, just to make sure that anything in the future, so this doesn't come up again. It sounds like the tax maps are already in place, so it would just, we'd go...
Just cleaning up history.
Yeah. I, we could also spend a lot more money on surveys and lawyers than I think any of this is worth at this point. And the physical evidence kind of leans towards the Aldrizes' claim, from my perspective, of looking at the way the vegetation was, the way the canal might have been there at one time, and the physical evidence that's there. So I, I think that's the better way to go. And I think in the long run, that's the right thing to do with the town and our neighbors.
So I'm just looking at this on my personal viewer, and it's listing a site showing the, the actual acreage or the shape as what is shown in green on the map, and it's listing it as a half an acre. So I, I think, Heather, to your point, I'm guessing that there would be no tax implication based on this, just because I think the town is probably already taxing that half acre property and adding 3,800 square feet. If it's not being taxed, you know, that would happen, but not necessarily. I don't see that as a huge issue at this point, so.
So do we need a motion on this?
You do, to authorize me to start proceeding with this.
You can speak, John, tomorrow. Obviously. Keep something going. Because I can't sleep at night because we're just... You were attacked by a snake. It's not on the screen. It's on the side. It's on the wall. I don't know. Okay, we need someone to mute.
Yep. Susan muted him. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I was saying, as long, as long as the property owners are aware that this could change the grand list...
Yeah. And if, and if it does, I doubt if it's going to be more than a few dollars, if that. But the, the grand list might be correct, and that's what it seems like at this point, that the grand list is correct.
Okay.
The map is correct, so.
And that, Heather, you probably cannot see, but the property owners are in the, in the room as well.
I can't see.
Yeah. I know, the cameras are not great.
They're not moving.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the, the only question I have is, at one point or another, we've been talking about or thinking about as a town of doing a river walkway. And so this might be an opportunity for us to ask for you, if you wouldn't mind people walking across your backyard by the river. I mean, not, not that I'm putting conditions on it, but just something to think about.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
That's a, that would be, that would be something I would have to think about.
And that's fine. Yeah. Yeah. I'm just bringing it up. And again, I'm happy to make the motion. I will make the motion, that we just allow Julie to make the boundary line adjustment, start that process.
I'll second that, Lee.
So Lee Gustafson's the motion, and Heather is the second. Any further discussion on this? I, I think it's the right thing to do.
I think so, too.
I do, too.
We spend money on lawyers way too often, and usually the results aren't any better than when we started in the first place.
They just cost us more.
Lee, your husband's a lawyer, so I don't know what you're talking about there. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion passes. You folks are willing to, if you're, you're welcome to stay if you want for the rest of the meeting, but you could clear out if you like also.
I don't wish to be rude, but if you had, I would, and I thank you very much. You're a very careful consideration of it all, and I do, and I, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. That was the owners of the property just thanking us for our action.
That's lovely.
Thank you, yes.
Our next item is our Chester Community Garden update. I know, I think at our last meeting, we had given the community group, the Community Garden Group, a copy of the, it's a license agreement at this point. It started out as a lease agreement, and it was changed to a license agreement per recommendations of our town attorney. Now, their attorney has gotten hold of it and looked at it, and of course, has come up with some ideas and some, some thoughts on it, on whether, some issues and points that they wanted to point out that they weren't comfortable with. So if we continue on this route, it would come back to the town, and they would probably try to negotiate some kind of arrangement or agreement for this document to proceed forward. During a lot of the conversations and the debate that's happened over this issue, I know that the, the greenhouse group, the, not the greenhouse group, the Community Gardens group, has had discussions about possibly joining in with the town on an agreement where the town would be, they would carry out their community gardens under the auspices of the town, under the direction of the town, and help from the town is not help, but basically guidance and direction and collaboration with the town. I wanted to bring that up because that was an option that we possibly have that would solve a few problems. It would solve the, the legal end of it and stuff, as far as responsibility, as far as insurances go, and if, and as far as a few other things go with that. And I just wanted to have a discussion with the board on how they thought about that procedure, if we went that route, and their ideas about that. I know that the Community Garden Group had a meeting yesterday, and they were okay with that if that was, and I think it was unanimous when they did have the discussion and the debate regarding that, that they would be more than welcome to start this project in a small scale underneath the auspices of the Chester Rec Department. So I'm putting it out there for a discussion to see how the board would like to proceed, if they were open to an agreement like that, or did they wish to proceed with the licensing that we discussed on our last meetings, or any other alternative that, that someone might have an idea for.
I, I have a question. The Frisbee course, that's on town property. How is that managed?
That, that's under the auspices of the Rec Department. It was basically built by a group of volunteers. The town has helped now and then over the years that it's been there, when some major things have happened. But it is with permission of the town, under the auspices of the town, with this group of volunteers that basically built it. That's, I believe, Julie, am I correct on that? That's how that worked?
Yeah. It's run by the town. But there are a group of volunteers that do the physical labor, but any money, any, any of that is all run through the town.
And I, and that would be the same way or the same type of framework that a group, the Community Gardens would be also? Would it work the same way under the auspices of the town like that, as far as money that they have in their till that would work through the town?
Yeah. When you and Cheryl Joy came into my office, yeah, that's one of the things we had talked about is, yes, if, if the town, if this is going to be operated and run by the town, then the financial piece for auditing purposes has to also run through the town. Yes.
Does that answer your question, Heather?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how, then, does, I'm just using the Frisbee course as an analogy. Is that an accurate analogy? I can't say the word.
I think it's a fair comparison.
Thank you.
I mean, another example that was brought up was Chester Townscape, which is not exactly the same way, but it is similar, that they, they take care of flower plots on town property, but they do it under the direction of the town. I mean, they have to have the town's permission, correct?
They have to have the town's permission, but their money, none of their stuff runs through the town because they're, they're, they, the Select Board has given them permission to plant flowers that are for the benefit of the community. So their money does not run through us.
And the snowmobile association, we just give them permission to use the land.
The trails, yep.
Yep.
The trails.
And they have their own insurances. They, it's a, that might even be state policy that I think part, part with that also. But yeah, they, they get the, the town's permission to use property of the towns to run the trails.
So back to the Frisbee course, the town operates that. So that falls under the jurisdiction of the Rec Department. And our Rec Department is the one that oversees that, operates it. They have volunteers from outside the Rec Department that come in and do maintenance and all that, and also maybe donate some things, but it's, it's an actual town course that's operated by the town.
I, I think...
So the question I have, sorry, Arnie, the question I have relative to the, to the garden space would be, if that falls under the jurisdiction of the Rec Department, who's going to do the actual operation? Who's going to manage? Who's going to be the ones to subdivide and divvy up and, and manage the garden plots? Is that going to fall on the, on the Rec Department? Well, so how does that work if we aren't actually operating the garden? How does that work from a standpoint of the town having the control of the garden?
I think it would be a lot like the Frisbee Golf Course. So, you know, the Rec Department technically runs the golf course, but most of the work is done by the Conservation Committee. You know, the laying out of the course, the, you know, they stepped in and took a big part of that. You know, it was their idea, actually, and they approached the town with it. The town wrote a grant to get, you know, the equipment needed for the Frisbee Golf Course, but, you know, it's not something that consumes a lot of Matt's time. Our guys go up and spread wood chips every now and then when we need to, type of work. But I, I could see this being very much the same. At the end of the day, it's the responsibility of the town. But I would think that the Garden Group is going to do most of that organization. It's going to have to run by Matt, you know, he's, you know, just so we know what's going on, because it's on town land. But I see it being the same way. I think the heavy lifting would be done by the volunteer group.
I, I think that's the case, and I think the group would basically continue on pretty much the same way they were talking as far as their plans, if they had a license or if they had a lease. They would be responsible basically for the success or failure of this, of this project. And, and if it falls through and it, and nothing happens, or there's no interest in it, or there's no follow-through, or there's some issues, then they would be the ones that we're responsible for it. I don't see this, and nor do I think it should, fall back onto the town to take on anything more than just supporting it by offering the use of some town property for some community gardens.
Except, if there's an issue with the, the gardens or the garden group not able to continue with it, then who's responsible for the cleanup?
The town.
So the town would be similar if the golf course decided to go away, we'd be the ones who'd take it out and do all this, so, okay.
Yeah.
And the, and the Frisbee Golf is, is an accurate example. The town, Matt is involved with it to rubber stamp things and stuff, but he does very little there. It's, it's the group that does, runs the tournaments, runs the promotion for it, has done a lot of all the advertising, so it's in all the Disc Golf websites and all these other items, too. So it's this, this separate organization working in conjunction with the town that has made it work the way it has, which has really been fantastic for the town.
So could we approve it, Arnie? Is it okay for talking?
What's that?
It, could we approve it for a two-year trial basis and reassess?
I'd like actually some more time to think about this. This is the first I've heard of it. I've had three or four minutes to think about this. It's not that I'm disagreeing with it, but I just want to have an opportunity to think about it a little bit. Because I don't know, not having thought about it for more than a couple of minutes, I don't know all the ramifications, if I've thought of all of my questions. So I don't, I'm not ready to vote on it. I think I'd like a little bit more time to ask some questions, or maybe Cheryl Joy has some more information that she can share, I don't know.
Cheryl, would you like to share any information? Are there any comments or anything you would like to add to this?
Melody Reed here. I have a comment. I'm with the Garden Group, and I just would like to mention that most...
This is Melody Reed? Is that who was, who's speaking? I can't see the thing from here.
Yeah.
Sorry. Melody Reed.
Yep. Go ahead, Melody.
Okay. According to the Vermont Community Network Organization, there are over 600 community gardens in the state of Vermont. Most of those, I would say about half of those are on town property. So there will be a lot of, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, it's been done. Probably about the other half are on school property, school properties. So, and I think that Julie actually at some point reached out to a couple of the towns to, to ask them some questions about community gardens, but I just wanted to mention that, that most of them are on town property and, and are run by the recreation departments.
Thank you, Melody. Cheryl Joy?
Yeah. Well, I want to point out that the board, which you all, most of you were, no, all of the people here now were part of the letter of support to the project when it was even bigger than what it is now. So that's one thing that I think is really important. The difference really right now, it's a very small thing to start out with right now with the gardens. It's not anything permanent. And I think that it's easy to take out gardens. I wouldn't want that to happen. It's not a big deal. It's not the greenhouse, which is, well, which was so much bigger, and you all supported, except for Ben Whalen, who's not here right now anyway. I also want to point out that it's mid-February, and we would like to start when we can, when mud season's over, to be, we have to, we have to know in order to go ahead and move forward with getting, giving out plots. So the details could be worked out going forward. And we have a lot of details worked out, it's just that we need to make sure that we have a place to start. There's not much difference. The only difference is that there's no lease versus lease, and this way, we have less protection and the town has more protection. So I don't know that, we've, we've talked about this for a couple of years, and I think there's, we've answered a lot of questions. I'm ready to answer any other questions if you have any. I don't know what would be holding you back.
Well, the question I have in my mind is what's going to be the cost impact to the town? You know, I, you just said that you would have more liability, the town would have less. Town has more responsibility, you would have less. So that's what I'm trying to wrap my brain around. And it's not that I don't think this is a good idea, I just want to make sure that we're not setting up the town for something that is unforeseen for the taxpayer. So I'm just asking for two weeks. I don't know if that's too much.
Oh, well...
But I think that, I don't think that's unreasonable, since I've heard of this 10 minutes ago or less.
I do have an answer to you, and I think I might have used the wrong word, words. What I meant to say with the comparison between the town and the, the organization is that you, not that you have more responsibility, you have less liability. We have, we, we have less protection, you have more protection when we don't have the lease, or the town does. I, I don't see much difference between having the, or not lease, but license, sorry. I I don't see much difference between having the, or not lease, but license, sorry, um, between that and this. It's better for the town this way.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that point. I'm just not disagreeing with you on any of those points, I'm just saying that now the town is taking on more financial responsibility than we would have had. And so I just want to make sure that I've thought through all the implications of that at the, I I don't want to get into a situation where something happens and all of a sudden the town is liable for expanding money to deal with the issue. So I, you know, I I understand where you guys are coming from, I'm not disagreeing with this. I think this is actually a good idea. But I'm just asking for a little bit of time, I'm not ready to vote on this right now. So if everybody else wants to, go ahead, um, but I'm not ready to go there yet.
Part of the discussion we've had over the course of two years is whenever it's gotten closer to something positive happening, some other questions have come up. The garden group has provided everything that we've asked for, uh, plans, uh, schedules, uh, details about their mission, details about how it was going to work. They're going to be controlling everything. The financial amount to the town, if it involved an hour a week, I'd be totally surprised of Matt's time if it if it even did that. I can't imagine it's going to even encompass that. This is something we could easily revisit again if some issues did come up because we do have the control and over what's happening because there is no lease, there's no license, there's nothing going on with that. The fact that you bring up fear of things in the future seems like a common thread that I hear when sometimes when people are against things, fear of the unknown.
Arnie, I'm not, I'm not afraid of what's going on.
Well, that's what I said, you were afraid of of what the of.
I'm concerned that we are going down a path, and I don't know what the outcome is going to be. So it's not a fear, it's a, it's a concern for the unknown. I, you know, maybe we're, maybe we're splitting hairs, I don't know. It just seems to me that while we have been given a lot of information, it seems to me that I've had to ask for that information, it's not been provided right up front. So a lot of the questions that have come up, a lot of the things that I've asked for have been given to me, but it's not like it was given to me, here you go, here's our plan, here's what we're going to do with the entire project. And so I'm just asking for a little bit more time to re to consider this new proposal, and I don't think it's an unreasonable request. And it's not like I'm afraid of what's going to happen, I'm concerned for the taxpayer of Chester. And I think that's a legitimate concern, and honestly, I'm surprised that nobody else seems to be concerned about that.
Well, I guess we're looking at it through different eyes and different feelings when it comes to, I I don't, I don't see the concern whatsoever about it. I'm not worried about the community gardens becoming an issue, and I'm not worried about that becoming a problem to the town. I'm not worried about the fact that we might have to spend a few dollars to help this project along. I think it's a positive thing for the town, I think it's a positive that we get community members together to do something that they like to do as far as gardening, as far as food, and as far as local, uh, growing things together like that. I mean, I know you say it's 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 something that you could, you need a little more time to think about. I just, I don't understand that, um, and I, I can't get there. And I guess we're going to disagree about this one.
Yep, that's fine.
I don't, I want to just add that I don't see that the town's going to have to spend much money on it because I don't see what money, except for just maybe once a month or every other month, we go to Matt saying, well, we're gonna, we'd like to do this or that. So it'd be just the time since we want to have, you know, per sort of permission or the go-ahead to do the next step.
Imagine a scenario, we give permission, a dozen plots go in, and then, um, the garden group dissolves, and then the town has to clean that up. Now, you said it's not my, we're just digging some holes in the ground, and that's fine. But sometimes there's equipment that's put in, there could be timbers put in, there could be other equipment that's put in to make the gardening easier that the town has to take care of. And then somebody comes in and uses a banned substance that causes some issue with the ground, the groundwater. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but I just am thinking that we need to be totally aware of the potentials that we could face down the road. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I just want to be, I want to be careful that we're not going into this blindfolded and coming up with something three or five or 10 years down the road that caught us by surprise. That's my concern.
Um, I have a question.
Go ahead, Heather.
Julie?
Yeah.
Are you there?
I am.
Um, as far as costs, do you see any cost to the town?
I think the only cost would be in occasional labor, um, so maybe the finance stuff, but I, again, I don't, we're not talking a lot of finance here. We're talking rental of plots and requests for checks to purchase seeds or something like that. Um, and I haven't, I don't know that there would be a lot of cost for Matt. I, we would not have no financial outlay. Um, I think it would be, I think it would be labor, um, potentially occasionally. I I'm not seeing a lot of cost, I'm not seeing a lot of cost.
Okay. And even if we allowed up to 12 plots or whatever the number is for the next two years, would you be comfortable that that's not going to bring on a lot of costs, um, to the town?
I I wouldn't think that it would, no. I would like direction from the board on, we've been talking about phasing in, um, I I would like a definition on what that, what that is, you know, quantified as far as a number.
Well, I 12 was made up on the spot.
Yeah, no, I understand. But I I don't see this as being something that we can't work through. So maybe, um, I know, Arnie, that you wanted to vote tonight, but, um.
Well, it it'll come to if anybody makes a motion.
I'm just wondering about.
I have no control over motions.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about, um, you know, maybe I can sit down and work up, if we're going to go this route, could sit down and work up a memorandum of understanding, that lays out these details, you know, maybe I get together with Cheryl, you know, how, what is a reasonable number of plots for phasing in? What, you know what I mean, that we can, that's never been written up that way? I I don't know, or go without it, which, whatever you guys want to do, but I feel like something needs to be in the file.
Well, the the fact that the town has complete control over it, it really, why do you need a memorandum of understanding about numbers when the town could turn around and just say, well, six is plenty or eight is plenty?
Okay, so I guess I would, right, but this board has been divided over, over a number of things, and as the town manager, I don't have autonomy to say, well, I agree with Arnie and not with Lee. I I I need direction from the board, Arnie. And you can do that tonight, like I, you know, but, or maybe that comes after and you go ahead and vote, I just.
Well, this is what I'd like to see, if I could be so bold, is I'd like to see, um, uh, something written up and we vote on it next meeting and X amount over the next two to three years and how we want to phase it in and the relationship between, um, perks and rec with, um, that, and then I'd be very comfortable in voting. And I'm supportive of it, but maybe that, we could then put it on the next agenda to vote in two weeks.
Is that the, uh, Lee, any ideas on this also? I mean, that's, that's what Heather has to say about it, and if the board agrees with that, then that'd be fine. I know, Lee, you'd be.
Yeah, that's fine with me, actually, that would be very helpful.
All right, all right, Arnie, I'm sorry to interrupt, this is Melody Reed again.
Go ahead, Melody.
Can I just mention that, uh, we, we've been planning to fine-tune our strategic plan, our business plan, our fundraising plan, and we actually have a meeting coming up this Sunday with, uh, Stephen, oh, God, I'm going to forget his name now. Plunkert, thank you, uh, Stephen Plunkert, this, uh, uh, Sunday, the 26th. And so it'd be wonderful, I'm I'm not pushing anybody, but it would really be wonderful if we could have a decision, uh, before we have this planning meeting. I I don't know if everybody knows Stephen Plunkert. He has years of experiencing, uh, experience working with nonprofit groups and municipalities. He's actually on the select board up in Cavendish. We were really lucky that he, uh, wanted to help us, and, um, it changes a little bit if the organization is going to be working with the town rec department, and it would help us, you know, fine-tune what is reality if we got the permission before we have that meeting. I hope that was clear.
The meeting is a strategic plan, it's, we're updating the strategic plan, it's a, you know, a retreat for, you know, we're going to, you know, six hour long, we're going to be doing a lot of work for going forward. So it would be helpful to know something that's going on.
I understand, uh, some of the board members wanting to wait two weeks and stuff. It still strikes me as being disingenuous because I don't remember any conversations even remotely resembling what we're having for the last two years when it came to the Chester Disc Golf and that organization and how that worked and how that happened on town property. I don't remember any conversations that we had about Chester Township, who had put flower beds all over our town. And I'm totally for it. We never sat down and talked about money, yet they get money from our trustees of public funds and liability, they're on bridges watering plants where there's highway tractor trailers zipping by all the time, and we've never had a discussion regarding any of that. But for some reason, this project here has drawn more criticism and more concern than than a lot of other things that I thought were equally comparable, and that's.
Well, I have to agree with you, Arnie, totally. Well, and if you guys want to vote on it tonight, I'm fine with voting on it and having a, um, having Julie and, um, the board of the garden place, um, do a memor, a memorandum after. I was just putting that forward because of Lee's concerns.
So how would the board like to to handle this?
I think we have to make a motion.
Well.
You can make a motion to approve the gardens, and with the understanding that there's going to be a document written out that clarifies everything.
All right. Well, clarifies what's the first phase of, for the first part, I would see this.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve for the garden to go, um, there and.
I'll take that, sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
To work with the town and Julie to come up with a written statement.
Heather's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second. Uh, any further discussion on this?
I've already said my piece. I lost my glasses, usually they're on a chain around my neck, you know.
On top of your head, Arnie.
That's sometimes where they are, that's, that's what happens. No further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
I think I'll call on this because a lot of the people on Zoom. Uh, Lee Dakin?
Aye.
Heather, Jase?
Aye.
Lee Gustafson?
I'm going to abstain.
And I'm voting yes. So we have three yeses and one abstain. And I guess we'll have this on the agenda in two weeks to finalize some of the details that go with it as far as, uh, some of the questions that have been brought up. And I guess we'll be revisiting this quite often, it seems, you'll have some supervision.
Thank you.
And I thank the group for sticking with us. I still think this is going to be a fantastic addition to the town as far as the community gardens go. That's going to offer a place for people that live in town, that have small apartments, that don't have access to places to grow things, to grow it in town.
I agree.
If it works out, it's going to be a trial period for a year or two, and we'll see how it works out. I hope the enthusiasm builds, I hope it becomes a positive thing for the town and people embrace it like they have other projects in this town that that have started with community involvement on a small scale and then involved the town a little bit, uh, along the way, and that's how they kind of built, uh, the organizations that helped this town. And I thank the group to that that had been sticking with it and persevering through all the time and stuff. We've asked a lot of you, we've demanded a lot of you, and you've always stepped up and done what you were asked. There's never been a time when I've walked away that and they, and you just refused any questions or concerns or comments or things that we wanted from you. You've always provided that information and stuck with it, so hopefully this will be the step in the right direction and we'll, we'll see what happens from here. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. I think that we're going to make you all happy, I think the town, it's a great, um, addition to the town, and I'm really excited to move forward. Thank you very much.
Just keep the rogue gardeners out and no tomato seeds, nobody, not Cal Street at high speeds, because the neighbors are involved in this, and it's going to be important that it's a positive thing for the people that that live around that area also.
I think they'll, we, we won't make waves, just grow vegetables.
Thank you.
Flowers.
The next item on our agenda is a coin drop, and it's requested by the American Legion. Julie, can you help us out on this one?
Um, I think you have a copy, the American Legion is requesting to have a coin drop on May 26th.
And we only have two a year, right?
Correct, this is the first one requested for 2023.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's that, Saturday or?
Uh, May 26th. It's a Friday.
It's a what day?
It's a Friday.
Friday?
Yep.
Usually it's on weekends, I thought.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Start of the weekend.
Close enough.
I'll make a motion to accept the request.
Second.
Heather's the motion and, uh, Lee Dakin's the second. Any questions, any discussion on this? I mean, the police department's all set with it, they've gone through all the steps that they've had to, they've done everything they have to.
Yep.
We do have that ordinance that says two a year, and this is the first one.
Yep.
There's not much else that we have to worry about on this.
Nope.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Citizens Advisory Committee. I know, Julie, you've been working with the, our new chief, Williams, on this, and we have a draft document in front of us. Can you help us out with this, Julie?
I can. Tom and I have spent a fair amount of time looking at different, um, policies with the towns that do have this, uh, throughout the state. This is a compilation of a few of them. Um, there's some changes compared to the ones that you had received before. Again, with the feeling and the direction the board has been, an advisory committee that this, this group would be a liaison between the community and the police, um, kind of directing how we want policing in Chester, the needs of the community and, and relaying that back to the police department, and relaying information from the police department back to the community. And Tom is excited about it, he's got, um, some thoughts and ideas and ways that he feels this could be a real benefit to both the community and the town. So this would be the start, I've put the ad in the paper, as you requested, for people to serve on the committee. Um, we, that deadline is March 3rd. So your meeting in, I believe it's March 15th, you guys would conduct your interviews like you do for any appointment, um, to a committee.
And it's a five-member group?
It will be, we are proposing a five-member group, I think it's a good number to like, really be able to delve in and get work done. Um, we have found, you know, committees much larger than that, it can get complicated. Um, Tom and I obviously would not be members of the committee. Um, you know, Tom would be working with the committee, so should not be a member, um, and I certainly should not be a member either.
Which will be at the meetings?
So we would, we would be, at the meetings, we would be working, we would be facilitating, but, um, you know, this needs to be representation of the community that's on this committee working with us, and that just makes things a conflict if we're on it, so. working with us, and that just makes things a conflict if we're on it, so.
So board members all have a copy of this draft. Is there any concerns or questions or comments regarding this document?
I thought it was well laid out.
I thought it was very well laid out as well.
I did think about the composition and the committee expectations. I thought that was good. So the goal is to have five members that sit for a three-year term, but the first grouping would be staggered so as to get to that rotation. So there'd be a maximum of two going off each year, one year and then two the next, one, et cetera.
Right, right. Because you want to be able to keep continuity on the boards.
Right, right. And then I also saw that this was limited to two consecutive terms.
That some towns do that. We threw it in there as an option, just so that you could have rotation from the, within the community. But you also need more than one term sometimes to get something done, right? So
Just to learn exactly how it works.
Exactly, absolutely, right.
And something, anything that's in this document, could it be changed by the select board or can the committee, it has to be changed by the select board if there was some
This is a select board framework document.
So it would have to?
It would have to be changed by you, but certainly the committee can make recommendation, and I would hope that they would.
And that's the part I was wondering about, because once you live through a document and you have to implement it and you're working by it, they would be the ones that would be an extremely good resource to, hey, maybe we should change this or amend this or have this a little different to make it.
Absolutely.
So it's like a living document.
Absolutely.
So under that
And may, oh.
No, go ahead, Heather.
So and maybe what we could do also is request that we have a joint meeting once a year to see how it's all going.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't, sorry, I didn't study it, but I don't think that's in there. But I would try to get something in there that, just a sentence or something that the select board's expectation is that there will be communication with the committee, with the board.
I mean, that happens a lot, and I think that's a good idea, Heather, to have a yearly review or a yearly meeting so we could have a conversation regarding the process in the committee and get input from the people that are involved with it. I think that's a good idea on anything that the board initiates and has going forward. In fact, with the greenhouse committee also.
Well, and I think if we don't put it in there, sometimes a year gets into two, gets into five.
Sure.
So would that fall under committee expectations?
Sure.
The committee expected to meet with the select board on an annual basis. The other question I had was under composition, there's a statement that says, members who fail to attend three regular meetings in a year may be considered to have vacated their position. Is that three consecutive meetings or just any three? Because I can see that being a little bit onerous from a standpoint of
So maybe you say consecutive?
I
I mean, this is a committee that meets
We're up to the committee.
It's a committee that meets once a month. So what a lot of, I've talked to a couple town managers who have added that in because they're taking, you got people in the community that really want to be active, and then you've got somebody taking up a spot. When they meet once a month and they're not there for three months, you know, you missed a quarter of the meetings.
Right.
They just put that in as a way to get other people involved. But that's entirely up to you guys. You guys may not want to be that strict.
Well, I noticed that the wording says may, may be considered, and may be replaced. So it's not like that absolutely has to happen. But my thinking is extenuating circumstances would be considered under this language. So I'm not suggesting we change it, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, the fact that what you said about the may part gives you a little leeway in case something does come up that, hey.
Yeah. And then the committee ex, so under that same paragraph, composition at the bottom, it says members, semicolon, I guess. So is that where the members would be listed in this or is that a typo?
No, that's a typo.
Okay.
It's a framework document, so we don't want to
And he is one of the best editors ever.
Yes, he is. He catches me.
He catches us all.
Not a bad thing. Not a bad thing.
So under committee expectations, I like this list. The one thing that I am especially interested in was the conflict of interest policy. So when I read that, the town has its own conflict of interest policy?
We do.
I just think that the whole expectation of this committee should be one of coming at this from a standpoint of how do we improve the policing community and the community interaction with the police and the police with the community. So I think that's critical to have that entire list, because I think that lays that out very well.
Mm-hmm.
The one thing that I'm questioning is going to ride along. I mean, we're not New York City, but does that set us up for any liabilities?
Well, there would be waivers, waiver forms signed for certain. Tom felt that members should ride along so that there is a perspective of the daily operation of a police officer in Chester versus, you know, you don't want somebody thinking we're in Chester, Vermont, that doesn't know much about the police department and is envisioning Baltimore, Maryland in their mind.
Right, right.
Sorry. You and I have had those conversations. So, you know, he just felt that that might be a good idea, give a perspective.
And get them to interact with a police officer.
Yeah.
I mean, to have a one-on-one of the police officer on a ride-along, I think would be pretty valuable to give them a little insight on how everything works and especially in the town that you're dealing with. And it is a lot different than a bigger city would be, but I think that's important. One thing that I saw on the committee expectations, and I just wondering why something like that was in there, where it said, committee members are not to utilize the meetings to facilitate personal agendas. Is there, is that something that came from another department?
That came from another town, yeah.
You did?
It doesn't have to be in there, it's up to you.
I'm just curious, because it almost seems like we're expecting that to be an issue because
My guess is it got added to somebody's policy based on something that happened, would be my guess.
Well, and I think a conflict of interest policy would cover that.
Yeah.
You can leave it to conflict of interest policy only.
I don't know. I like that, you know, the personal agenda. I mean, it just, it makes it real clear. Because the conflict of interest can be subject to interpretation, if you will. And the personal agenda could, yeah, that could
Personal agenda is way subjective, is what I thought.
Well, so is a conflict of interest. I mean, unless somebody has a clear conflict that either they don't recognize or they do recognize, but they're ignoring it. So I guess, I mean, I'm happy, I'm okay with taking out the personal agenda thing, but I don't think it hurts to have it in there.
I'd like to take it out at this point, but it's a living document. So certainly, if this was tagged in another town, maybe we would need to tag it in, but I prefer to start off without that.
A little more positive. What's the consensus of the board on that line then? In or out? Lee, you're okay with it?
I'd say leave it in, but if everyone else wants to take it out, that's fine.
Heather?
Out.
Lee Dakin?
No, I would say out as well.
Out? Is that what she said?
I think she said out.
That's what she said, yeah.
Thank you. Sometimes they're too loud. We'll take that one.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions or comments on the document? So the next step would be, you're gonna, it's gonna be, it'll be a final copy that will be written up for us.
Oh, man.
And we could address it at our next meeting.
Yep.
We have till March 3 until, have we gotten applications or are people interested in the position?
I have received letters of interest from several people.
Good.
Yeah, so there's definitely interest to be on the committee, which is great.
Hang in a second.
Great, I agree.
So come on up to the microphone, please, Leslie, and give us your name and
Good evening. Just a simple question. The five-member group would be composed of who or what? In terms of, I see in the legislature, they say one teacher, one ex-judge. Like, is this just five interested community members or?
Excuse me, what is your name?
Lesley Thorson.
Did you get that, Sue?
Yes, thank you.
Hang on, we say it in here. I'm trying to find it.
The document says, under composition, the members will represent a range of interests and experiences such as business owners, education, nonprofits, public safety, community, faith community, youth representation, and more. So that would be the brackets around who would make up the board.
So that's only who's going to be included on the board? That's labeled in that list?
It says, and more.
I would think it was just a general
Yeah, it's just an idea.
Right, so why even say anything?
Why not say anything? I mean, we're trying to be, to include as many members of the community as possible. So if somebody who's in the faith community or public safety doesn't see their name on there, then maybe they wouldn't feel inclined to join. I don't know. I mean, I don't see why it would make difference to add that as to not add that.
Well, and more just seems like, oh, you know, whoever else. It just, I don't know. Why say anything if it's not a specific type of person you're looking for or, like I'm saying in the legislature, when they make committees, they always say they outline specific people for specific reasons. So if we're just looking for community members who'd like to be on this advisory committee, it should just be welcome to all community members. I don't see why it's listed as certain anything, you know?
It's an example. It's not an exclusive list. So I'm not, I mean, I see your point, but I'm not necessarily
Right, right. I'm not trying to be a pest, but it just seems a little exclusionary if like, you know, your group isn't there. Like, I'm not a business owner or, you know, I'm not a nonprofit. So I don't know, it just seems, why not just have any community member who has an interest, you know, in serving on an advisory board to, you know, help with the police and the community's relationship?
How about if we add community members as one of the things on the list?
Good idea, right.
Well, it actually says that the sentence before. The committee will feature diverse cross-section of active community members. So that's already in there.
Oh, okay.
So I think, reading through this entire paragraph of composition, I don't see it as being exclusive at all. I think it's being as inclusive as possible. And so we're saying active community members, which meets the suggestion you're making, and then we're giving examples of who that might include.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I suppose, but it just seems like, why wouldn't it just be all community members? And then leave it at that, you know, like not make a list, for example. Some people might feel like, well, I don't, I'm not on that list because I know there was, when you did the police chief search, it was they wanted a business person, you know, they wanted this person, that person. It wasn't very inclusionary. So, you know, I don't see that list as inclusionary. That's all.
Okay.
So, that's all. And not having the document in front of me, you know, it's like kind of hard to follow, so.
Is this online? It should be online, right?
The draft is not online.
Yeah, so it's like, we're talking about it, but we're not aware of what's in that document.
We could change it a little bit if we had a cross-section of members throughout the town of Chester and then put community members in that list instead of having it spelled out in the beginning part of it.
Whatever. I'm fine with the language. I don't see it as problematic. I don't think it's exclusive or exclusionary. I think it's language that could be read and should be read as inclusive of anybody who's in the community. Active community members would be anybody in the community.
Right, but then you're saying active. What's the definition of that? You know, you live here, you pay taxes here, what's the definition of active? So, I mean, I'm not trying to be a pest about it, but it should just really say all community members who have an interest, you know, and live in the town of Chester, you know?
All right, thank you, Leslie.
That's it, thanks.
I appreciate it. The consensus of the board? Any changes to that wording or are we going to leave it the way it is?
I'm fine with the way it is.
Lee, you're fine?
I'm fine with the way it is.
Heather?
I'm good.
All right, stays the way it is.
Okay. So I'll make these other changes and bring the final document back the next meeting. And then you guys will do your interviews on the 15th. And you can either make appointments that night or you make them at the following meeting, whichever you feel you want to do.
So just to get the word out, for community members, any community members, we're all welcome to put a letter of interest to the town to be included on this committee. And I think the more people we have, the better off we'll be. And Ariana, come on up to the microphone.
State your name first.
I'm Ariana Knapp. I had one follow-up question. Will this document be made available to members of the public who are considering wanting to sign up for the committee? So is there, at what point does someone who wants to volunteer be on the committee get visibility to that document?
Sure.
Before or after they raise their hand?
No. Now that the board has seen it, I don't put drafts on when the board has not seen them yet.
Yeah.
So now that the board has seen it and the changes are made, so I'll do this. Amy will get it up on our website. Yeah. And, yeah, Sean, go into it. Yeah, thank you.
And one quick question I had, when this committee is formed and they have their meetings, these meetings will be open to the public?
These are public meetings, subject to open meeting law.
They'll be warned, they'll be, you know, so even if you are not a member of these committee, on this committee, you're welcome to attend the meetings, to be a part of it and to make sure that your voice is heard. So it's not just going to be a closed-door thing.
And there's minutes, and they have to follow open meeting law because they're appointed by the board, so, absolutely.
Anything else? Anybody else have any other questions or comments regarding our Citizens Advisory Committee? I know it's been a while to get to this point, but there were a lot of things that we were dealing with before we got here, and the biggest one being a new police chief. And I think that's helped a lot, and Tom has really done a great job as far as the advisory committee and the general well-being of the police department.
Strategic steps.
Next item on our agenda is ambulance rates. I know we've talked about this before, and as we look at the information that we have in our package, as usual is the case, our rates are below average all the time. So Julie, can you help us out with this?
I can. So we, the last time we raised rates was in 2021. We did not raise them in 2022. So it is definitely time, given the cost increases across every area. It's time. So Amy and Mike Ranzio put together a list of what is what, most of us use ComStar for ambulance billing. This is the average of what ambulance services in our area are billing, and in yellow at the top is what we are billing. So as you can see, yes, we average almost four, in some cases, almost $400 difference. So it is time to increase our rates.
And did we always have a non-transport review?
No, so that is new. That is new and is something, we are one of the only ones that does not charge. Anytime that ambulance goes out the door, it's a minimum of $100 in labor. That's not even use of the ambulance.
So it's not even covering our costs?
It's not, no. We're spending a lot of money. And Micah gave you what it would have been over the past three years, would have totaled about $34,000 in three years. So again, not, we're not, we're not looking to be this big for-profit ambulance service, but we do need to cover at least our labor costs anytime that door opens and the ambulance goes out, so.
Is that refusal fee of $100, is that a standard fee or is that?
Yes, this is standard. This is standard. Most municipalities charge $100 bucks. Yeah, that's a common rate.
So do you need a motion to raise the rates?
Need a motion to set the rates, yep. Yep.
So what do you recommend for rates?
What is in the average?
Okay.
That average. And then to approve the additional $100 for non-transport refusal.
So anybody willing to make that motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the rates as shown So I'll make a motion to approve the rates as shown under the average row and the non-transport refusal fee of $100.
I'll second the motion.
Lee Gustafson's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion or comments on ambulance fees?
Yes, I have a comment. I think we should ask for this to be reviewed on every two years.
Which is kind of, that's what our practice has been, is, is two years, yep. Thank you, Heather.
Anything else? Anybody else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All set.
So if I can just make a comment, not related to what we just passed, but kind of. My son used to live in East Wallingford and they, the ambulance service there for Mount Holly that covered at East Wallingford sent out a letter every year saying to the community, if you want to pay a $50 fee, then you get services for free, basically. So I don't know if that's something that...
Ludo does that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Ludo does that as well. We've talked upon and off about it. It's something we certainly could look into.
I don't know if it'd be more or less, you know, what the advantage would be.
I could talk to Scott about, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ludo instituted that, I think, five or six years ago.
So you pay $50 per person for the year?
Yeah, I guess. I don't know. He did, he just said they got a note in the mail and that's what it said, so.
I could see a lot of seniors taking advantage of something like that myself.
Right.
Just in case.
Well, and, and the thing, Arnie, can I talk?
Yeah, no, go ahead, Lee.
Oh, yeah, ahead.
Um, the, the thing is, is the difficulty with this is, and we've had difficulty, is we take in taxes and we pay for the ambulance service, right? And so, you know, people who get a bill for it are upset, you know? But because they pay for it in double, in different ways. So anyways, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, I would hope that most of the time it's insurance that pays.
Absolutely, yeah. We don't have, I mean, we do have a collection policy, but we're not, when people don't have insurance one way or the other, we don't, we, you have that write-off line in your budget?
Right, and we asked for you a few years ago not to go after someone who doesn't have, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, we don't, Heather. We're not aggressive when people do not have...
Right, and I'm bringing this up because I want to say, I think it's really great that we aren't super aggressive with it because it is one of those things that is difficult if you don't have insurance or, or, or.
Yep.
This, this must be the time, but I have to give my spiel about this country and no medical insurance.
Oh, that's, that's later, Arnie.
Moving right along.
It's, you get a little chuckle out of it, but I think it's pretty sad.
I do too, Arnie.
About this, and it always comes up and it affects everybody in this country, and we're the only ones that do it this way. And it's, it just amazes me that the richest country in the coun, in the world can handle it and does some, for some reason, can't, can't figure it out.
And, Arnie, I'm not laughing at the situation.
I know, I know, I know.
Okay, I want to make that clear.
I always, sorry.
No, it's a difficult situation.
Yeah. No, we already voted on that one, didn't we?
Ambulance rates, yeah.
Thank you.
All set there. You're welcome.
I got, I got, I got all upset about the insurance again, which brought it up.
No worries.
Next item is our certificate of highway miles that we have with the state every year. And it basically is just a document that we have to sign.
There's no changes. You didn't add or reduce mileage.
Class one roads, two and a half miles. Class two, which is mostly the paved ones, 12.6. Class three is mostly our dirt roads.
Mostly, yeah.
75 miles of dirt roads to maintain in this town. And then the state highway, 19.1, so a total of 109 miles. It's one of the biggest towns in the state, I think.
Per capita, we're the second largest of dirt miles.
Second largest.
Of dirt road miles.
Lot to maintain for the highway department, a lot going on, especially when you have a mud season in the middle of February.
Yeah, exactly.
Ten mud season? We're up to 10.
I know, I know. It's crazy.
And kudos to our highway department.
Do we need a motion on that?
No, you just need to sign.
Yeah.
Housekeeping.
I'll be in on Friday or Monday.
That'd be great, thanks.
That's just, you know, I want to get a sign on this stuff.
No, we're having to go into executive session.
I just want to sign all that stuff, but, you know, whatever. Uh, future agenda items, new business. Anybody have anything that they would like to have on future agendas? I know we had, we talked about the academy building coming up, the solar field. As soon as Greenbacker gets back to it, but I don't think that's going to be happening anytime soon from the, from the tracker that we have with them. It seems that they're going to have to be pushed a little.
Yeah.
So when do we expect any here from the finance guy?
Do you want to talk about your guy?
I did, I did speak with a, a gentleman that has a second home in Chester up on Lovers Lane. And I think I shared the questions with you, Julie?
You did.
And I think I shared it with you also. Until we have answers, Tom, to most of those questions and stuff, which basically comes down to, is it a good investment for the town? What's the return on investment? And he broke it down to some of the questions that he had, and it involved kilowatt-hours, how much we pay, what are the, the deal that we have with, that they have with Green Mountain? Do we have to take them on? Do we not have to take them on? And until we have answers for a lot of those financial questions, he doesn't know whether it's a good idea. He thinks it's going to be a good idea, and, and the impression he has from looking at these, at the documents that we did provide him, and I got to tell you that he's doing this just because he's trying to help out. He's usually a person that's paid to do this kind of thing. He does a lot of it with the state of Vermont, and he's done it a lot all over New England as far as, I think it was methane and farms and manure-related. But basically, the same type of deal, you know, off-grid production of power and the contracts and the finances that go with it and stuff. So his, his questions that he presented, kind of, we have to figure out how we're going to answer them. Some of them, I imagine, they might be relatively easy to find from Green Mountain. But other ones, that if we have to deal with Greenbacker, I got a feeling they're not going to be exactly that cooperative, especially if it's going to show that it's, it's a good deal for us to pursue the purchase option.
Well, does that also depend on the price? You know, so if we, if, if it's 1.1 million versus 2.4, you know, it's obviously going to be a lot longer ROI at 2.4 than 1.1.
That's the big one.
Yeah.
I would think that's the big one. The other ones, uh, there's a range in there in that contract that it talked about with Green Mountain and how that works and 90% and 10%, it could only do this, it could only do that. Those things are there, but the agreement with the two other outtakers, St. John'sbury Academy and I think Kitzfeldt.
Kitzfeld, yeah.
It's going to be interesting to see, do they have the same contract? Do they have the same options? Do when we exercise our option, do theirs drop away or can they turn around and say, no, we want to buy? I mean, I, you know, there's still a lot of questions. We're heading in the right direction with the appraisal. That opened the door and got a lot of the information that we needed to start. But now the specifics are coming out, and that's, it's going to be interesting where all that plays.
So I'm wondering about the logistics of this, whether we try to get some of the information that he's asked for while we're waiting for Greenbacker, or do we just wait for Greenbacker to come back and laugh in our face and then it's, you know, a moot point?
I think as long as we're not paying for it, you know, I...
Right, yeah.
You know, we'll dig out what, what, what I can find and what I can get. I, it would be interesting to know at what point is there not a good return of investment? I mean, Greenbacker's not going to come back and say, oh, I'll take your number. I mean, it's less than half what they're asking, so. But, but what do we counter with? I don't know. And I think this analysis is going to be really important. So, I mean, we're not, we're, it's not, we're not paying for the accountants to do it.
No, no, but I'm just, I don't want to waste this time. Yeah, I just don't want to waste this time or your time digging up all the information he's looking for. So, you know, I, I think it's worth gathering the easy information, the low-hanging fruit, and then give that to him, and then if...
It'll help us along the way.
It'll help, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Arnie, for connecting with him. That's, that's great.
I run into him on Lovers Lane on my walks and his walks.
Okay.
And for some reason, solar came up. I don't know how it happened.
You never know.
Uh, anybody else have anything for future agenda items? Next item on our agenda is an executive session to continue our town manager review.
So I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of town manager review?
I'll say it.
Lee Gustafson's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second. All those in favor of going into executive session for the town manager review, please say aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
We'll, uh, we'll call you up, guys, I guess, from downstairs or somehow we'll figure it out.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Those are getting on the boundary.
Yeah, we'll get off here and then, yeah.